All right, good evening, everyone. Want to welcome you to the October 1st meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, again. Remind everyone that this is being filmed live and broadcast at your leisure on the Douglas Cable YouTube channel. Is there anyone here that's currently here to speak about something currently not on the agenda? No? I bounced over at Chairman's announcements. The Board of Health received a grant award for an air sensor program, and in our packet is some information regarding a purple air flex prior to today's meeting. I joked with Lisa that if they test this during the pollination season of our small town, they may actually malfunction. But Matt, can you paint a little better picture for us?
Not a whole lot better than that. I think this is a statewide program. There is a desire to put these sensors in many different communities and get a sense of air quality all across the Commonwealth. I'd simply say if we're ever going to charge this big city for the fact that we clean their air for them, we need a database upon which to base that charge, right? Of all seriousness, it's one thing to collect, you know, the occasional samples at airports, another thing to have a much wider sensor network, so the Board of Health decided to participate.
And while there's no vote or anything to be taken, is there anything additional that this board needs to do in regards to this? Recognize it at some point?
Great.
Very good. We'll thank the Department of Environmental Protection for some air sensors. Moving on to item number five, we have a joint meeting with the Water and Sewer Commissioners. Commissioners, would you like to come forward? And Kyle as well, if you'd like.
The mic is on. That mic is on.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have them. That's a good point. Good evening. You guys want to call your -- oh, you can't. Oh, you can. Yeah, call your meeting to order.
I read Colin's papers. He knows Colin better than I do.
Okay.
We have to call a meeting to order. We have to call a water sewer meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Warren's meeting at 7:05 on October 1st. Second.
Good evening. So the purpose is here today is to fill a vacancy on the commission. And with us is Kyle Lahus.
Yeah.
Kyle, good evening. Awkward as it is, I'll just start. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right. I've lived in town for over 30 years. Father of four children, varying from ages of two to 17. Pretty well vested in the community, in the town. I'm kind of a plan on staying here for a long time. Just kind of decided that at this point in my life, I wanted to get involved in town. I'd watched a couple of the meetings online and found interest in it, found out that there was an opening, and I had applied. I'm heavy in the automotive industry. I'm a fleet manager currently for a couple of large construction companies. I have a pretty wide variety of skill sets with costing and, you know, managing a fleet of over 200 pieces of equipment. I just, I think I have a lot of strengths that I could help the town with, and sure I could learn a lot from the current group of guys.
Great. Yeah, makes good sense. Any questions from either board?
How long does vacancy, this position, for until the next election?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the remainder of the term that's vacated? You know, if it's a couple of years or?
No, I think it's still this election.
This next election? Okay. Yep. I didn't know if it was filling out a term.
I don't believe so, but.
I guess we can find out.
Yeah, I think it was just.
We got until May to figure it out, right?
Until the election. But I could be wrong. Matt's giving me that eye like.
Well, there's three years, right?
Yeah.
So when were you last reelection?
Oh, I think I'm up this company.
Wasn't Keith first elected this year?
Yeah.
He was, okay.
It's a three-year term.
Three-year term is on for us.
Yeah.
All right, we can figure it out by spring anyway.
No, but Keith was elected, then he resigned, so it's the fill of vacancy for the rest of his term.
The full vacancy for.
Entire rest of his term.
Okay. All right. I stand corrected.
You even have to buy a sign.
I'll give you a way to put them up for you. There you go.
Whose term is up this year? Is it mine or?
I believe it's mine.
I think it's Colin's. I can double-check my book, though. I just don't know offhand right now.
Good.
So, how do you pronounce it?
Lahus.
Lahus. Make a motion to appoint Kyle Lahus to fill out the remainder of the term that was vacated on the Water and Sewer Commission.
Motion's been made by Mike. Second. Seconded by Hal. Hal, third.
We got four of them.
I think we all might second that. Now, this is an aggregate vote, so you guys are welcome to vote here, but go ahead, Hal.
I move that we appoint, presented to the board for, we don't have the length of the term, but.
I just made that motion, I think.
So seconded, so then I guess, let's do a roll call vote. That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, okay. Davis' eye.
Smith's eye.
Stevens' eye.
Fitzpatrick's eye.
Bonin's eye.
Herr, eye.
Bob Josie, eye.
Sir, you are a proud member of the Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, thank you and appreciate your service.
Let that wash over you tonight.
The first pun, it's.
Good night.
Good night.
Do you have to adjourn their meeting?
Oh, yes. Probably.
Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All right.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, the revote of the ZBA appointment. You know, I spent the past couple of days in Washington, DC, and I was thinking about this particular line item, and it could go any number of ways. The one thing I would say is, while I don't believe it's a failure of leadership, I do think as a, the chairman, I went into this meeting with information that may be contrary to what other members on the board think. I have asked, asked prior to the original vote whether Les, as a member of this board, could in fact vote for himself, and council had unequivocally said yes to that. So with that, I don't want to beat it, but it is for a ZBA alternate appointment, and in the interest of full transparency, I'm more than happy to continue the discussion. And Ross, let's start with you. Thoughts on this item?
I just see there's a, there's a fair amount of involvement with the individual. I could see the easy, I don't want to call it the wrong word, but easy. I just think there's a little bit too much involvement with this particular individual to be involved on that particular board. That's just my opinion. I can't say it's right or wrong, but.
Yeah, no, that's why I ask. You're entitled. Flow around the room. Les?
You know, I think I stepped aside for, to allow a full member to join the ZBA for the betterment of the town, so they would have five full members. And filling the alternate position was really to ensure that any applicant, any citizen of Douglas coming before the board, should someone have to recuse themselves, be able to have five voting members. Again, for the citizens at home to realize that they have to have four out of the five votes for favorable decision from the ZBA board. It's pretty important to have five voting members at all time and maintain that. So I stepped forward just for the volunteering aspect to help the community that was shorthanded on a board that only, at the time, only had two full members.
As a member of the Board of Selectmen.
As more of a.
Mike, Hal?
And your position now is alternate?
Yeah, as an alternate. It's really to be an alternate.
You got a full board.
They have a full board now, and to be an alternate. Throughout the years, they have always had an alternate or two, and they've used them for hearings and cases, so.
I will point, this will have, remaining on that board, there'll be an additional alternate position open.
Yep.
So it's not taking from someone should someone come.
Well, I think Les has got a good background, and his alternate is, I think, better than actually serving on the board, so this gives him some flexibility and easy slide-in if he does have a project before the town. So I'm still in favor of appointments and alternate.
Mike?
Well, my stand hasn't changed. The applicant's involved in a lot of different projects throughout the town. Most of them are challenging lots. He fills different roles in those lots, and I feel that he, it would be a conflict for him to be on the board to start with. You've received opinion from town council, 2021 and in 2024, I received the same opinion from the Ethics Commission. And he can't vote for himself to be on that board, and we can't appoint him to be on that board. That's from the ethics. So I still have the same opinion. I'm still opposed to it, so you do whatever you want. You're the chairman, and you chose to put it on the board?
Well, I haven't seen any ethics opinion. I have seen town council's answer to the very poignant question, is Ken Les Stevens' vote, and the answer in black and white was yes. I would say this, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, it is a little unusual, that 15-year serving on this board, that there isn't a little more collegiality to it. So with that, I will call a roll call vote. We'll actually make a motion in a second, first.
I'll move that we appoint Les Stevens as alternate to zoning board of appeal.
I'll second that motion.
Made by Hal, seconded by Les. Roll call vote. Hal?
Davis, eye.
Ross?
Smith, opposed.
Stevens' eye.
Fitzpatrick, opposed.
Bonin, eye. So, thank you, Les, for your service, and we're not doing terribly, but we now will call the item number seven, a 7-10 hearing, public hearing on the Grill on Main. We'll open that. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Yep. I'll make a motion to open the Grill on Main hearing regarding their one-day special permit, sorry, special alcohol license request for Oktoberfest, and the change of hours, and the six-month review of their entertainment license.
Motion to open the public hearing's been made by Les.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ross. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hold on one second, Tony.
What are you, why are you here? Good evening.
We just wanted basically to do what we did last year. Same thing.
Sorry, you guys. Point of order, you gentlemen need to vote on motioning the public hearing. The motion was made and seconded, it wasn't voted. Point of order, sorry.
Fair enough. Matt? The motion has been made to open the public hearing and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tony, in a second.
You'll be recognized in a minute, Tony. Relax.
Setting the tone, that's all.
Yep.
No pun intended. Second one at 7:12. Good evening. You looking to do the same thing that you had done previous Oktoberfest?
Yep, last year.
With nothing really had changed from?
No.
With no issues?
No changes, same restrictions.
You moved away from the live music, if I recall?
Yes. Yep. No to-go drinks, just outside.
Still tip-certified and, you know, your business license is, you know, right there for all to see. Very good. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Any particular reason why you advertised it six days ago?
Just because we wanted to get it out there, just in case we could, but.
You probably should get approval before you advertise it.
Yeah, well, we would have written something like putting a stating.
You put it on the Douglas Facebook page that you had.
On our Facebook page, yes.
Yeah, like that goes on Dynamic Douglas, right? But that's where I seen it, so.
Okay.
Yep. That's all I have.
Very good.
Just for the minute taker to help them, just if you guys can both introduce yourselves, just for our minute taker. We know who you are, but I know our minute taker's not going to know you guys by name.
Lisa takes the minute. Oh, no, Stephanie takes the minute.
Stephanie takes the minute.
She'll take the other.
That's all.
Done minutes, looked up here.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Larissa Thompson, one of the owners. And Rebecca Wester, the other owner.
Cool. I think you guys being on Main Street's great. I mean, business and stuff like that, and they'd be able to participate in Oktoberfest. I know some of the business owners take a hit, you know, the Zmart, one of the managers there, you know, mentioned that they take a hit because of the loss of revenue for Saturday's gas and everything else. So I get, you know, I mean, you guys are paying rent, space, and stuff like that, so to be able to still sell product and not be impacted, you know, and which is good. That's what the pizza places do and things like that, so. I think this is pretty straightforward.
Just a question. The park, what we have set up, obviously, it's private property, it's part of the rental for your restaurant, right?
And we do set up on the bottom half of it.
Any other questions from the board?
We need three separate votes here, or?
Yeah.
Before we get there, I think there might be someone from the audience that would like to speak.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Lisa, have we had any issues over the last couple of years? Any feedback from the police department or anything?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Other than.
Yeah. That was a while back. Yep. That was growing pains to freshen. Little tribute to that.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Tony, sir, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, I have a couple comments and a question.
If you could, please stand and let us know who you are.
I'm Tony St Pierre, Chairman of Douglas Oktoberfest. There's four members on the committee, most of them have been doing, planning this event for like 30 years. You guys assign us to put on this event, and, you know, so we see our job as organizing up this event, and we have the responsibility of executing this event on that day. My question is, is why do we find out today that we have an applicant in town that's applying for a permit for Oktoberfest, okay, and we knew nothing about it? It's a venue that affects our event, one way or the other, and we just hearing about it today. So that, you know, that's the general question. Why do we have an instance where we have somebody that's applying for something that doesn't think that they have to talk to us? And a better question is, is why doesn't the Board of Selectmen ask us what we think about it?
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, first of all, they're not out on Main Street, right?
I get that.
Okay. Let me finish. I listen to you say what you need to say. Let me say what I'm going to say. They're not out on Main Street. Their business is actually being affected, just like other businesses, and they're open for business, just like everybody else. But being behind it, an attraction to that would, they have some outside seating for the one day. Has it taken that much away from your event over the last three years when they've had I don't think, I don't, I think the answer would be no. I think you're still going to get the same amount of people there. I purposely walked by your tent, I walked by their tent, to see what kind of clientele was there and seeing how it was organized, and they were both very similar. The same thing was going on with both of them. I don't see that they, their operation would negatively take away from you at all. They're not, they're not affecting you. That's why I criticize the applicant for advertising it a week ahead of time. I just, I think that's improper. You should at least get permission before you raise your hand in the air. I've asked our assistant if there was any issues over the last couple of years, and the answer was no. The first year, there was a little hiccup, but there hasn't been any issues from that point. They're entitled to still conduct their business, as this selectman pointed out, they have rents to pay and staff to pay and overhead and all that other stuff. I don't think they're taking anything at all away from you. If anything else, they might even contribute to drawing people in that come down to Main Street. That's just my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
No, it's.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So in the past, they have participated, so it's no change, nothing.
And.
It'd be nice if they coordinated with you perhaps, but there is a history, at least, of them participating.
But my question wasn't whether or not they should be entitled to do it. Of course, they should be entitled to run their business. My question was, is that we, it does affect us, it affects the venue, especially if they're going to do entertainment. Are there, is there plans for entertainment there?
No.
No.
Okay.
But we didn't know that. We didn't know, we didn't know the details of what their, what their plans are there. And, you know, for some reason, we, we don't have to be informed of that, you know? Even though, even though we're, you know, putting this event on and drawing the crowd to the town, that they're going to take part of. I mean, I get it, but.
The licensing, Tony, and to the, to the board that makes this happen, right? This is an important event for the town, and I watch the Douglas Cable, and I see four people putting on a tremendous event. You're not a licensing authority, though. This board is. They wouldn't come to you because there's nothing that you can grant them. That has to come through us, and that's what this discussion is.
And I think, just building, you know, through the chair, building on what Mr. Fitzpatrick has stated, you know, they've got a clean record from any incidences and stuff like that. You know, they did it last year. Again, they're paying rent and, you know, and providing for the community throughout the community, so, I mean, I think, you know, I don't see any issues with them, but continue to contribute in Oktoberfest. And again, where people want to sit down and have, you know, sometimes that's a challenge, is find seating in Oktoberfest, sit down and eat, or do things like that. So having restaurants open, I think, is a benefit. I know there's a number of restaurants along the way that try to maintain their business operation, so.
I think, my own personal opinion, is they're making an effort to make the best out of the situation, right? Because they're impeded on any vehicle traffic or anything else that's going to come into that area during the course of that day. I don't see any issue with it myself. I'll put in advertising a week earlier, and I'll aggravate you with that for a few years.
It's okay, I apologize.
Then I'll get away with it. But if you say it enough times, you won't do it.
Just as a side note, just as a note, they applied for this liquor license August 14th.
Right.
And it was signed off by our police department tax collector September 17th. So this isn't a last-minute application either.
No, no, the chairman of the Oktoberfest's concern is he wasn't notified, but as the chairman pointed out, is we're the licensing authority. We don't necessarily notify everybody in town what we're doing. We advertise our agenda and stuff like that, but that office is pretty busy to be.
Public hearing, okay.
Feeling all these calls all day long. And as in, no disrespect is intended to your group, Tony, but we have to also respect the businesses that are downtown, and at some point, we all need to work together to just make it a fun day, which it is. It's fun for the whole town, you guys have a blast during that day, they have a blast during that day, everybody coming. You have no timeout as soon as I'm done, and then we just, we get along and just make the best of the day. If it's a good day, you should be proud of what you've accomplished. All right? Go to Tony.
That's actually my point. My point is, is if we're informed, we can work together, okay?
But last year, you didn't want to work with us.
No, it's true. It's okay.
All right.
Go ahead, Tony.
But instead, when it doesn't happen, it has the appearance of being adversarial, and we really don't want that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I guess you could assume it that way, but you have to respect the fact that there are businesses trying to operate there. Well, they're operating there every single day of the year, so it has to be a little give and take from both sides, from you guys and from them, right? So we all have got to learn how to play nice in the sandbox, I guess.
And maybe after this year, there'll be further discussion, right, amongst everyone? I think, I would agree with Mike, the argument could be made that you can greatly bolster Oktoberfest by offering, you know, a nice way to nook and cranny to get away from the crowd a little bit, and there's no live music. I know that was a fair concern, and you guys addressed that. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak before I close the public hearing? Make a motion, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? Public hearing is closed. Before us are three things, and actually.
Do you want to need to vote on the motion to close the public hearing?
Yep. Oh, I'm off my game today. Motion to close the public hearing. Vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Yep.
All right, I need to find my chairman stride a little bit better, I think.
Can somebody mute?
What'd you say?
I'm just wondering.
Your B-game is good.
The guy behind the curtain.
That's the angel on your shoulder. Just bringing your ear.
Listen, one thing I won't complain about is Matt Benoit steering me in the right direction. And as I'm looking at this, there is a particular item, so we've made, so we've closed the public hearing?
Oh, I do one at a time.
Yeah, I think we want to, but I do want to have a further discussion on item three. But the first one is the one-day special alcohol license for Oktoberfest. Maybe it should read for October 1st. Oh, excuse me, October, whenever.
Fifth.
It says fifth.
Move approval.
On the memo, done.
Yeah, okay. Made by Hal.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Les. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Make a motion of the change of hours of application for the Grill on Main.
Just want to point out that I believe that the first one-day special alcohol license was a unanimous vote. Mike made a second on the change of, made a motion of the change of hours, seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe that to be 5-0. And then six-month review of entertainment license. This, I can't believe it's been six months since we, was it Carriocchi?
Yeah.
We were doing? Was that the big piece? How's that working out?
It's going good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And as far as I can tell, there's been no residential concerns whatsoever. So, is that hard and fast six-month review? Is that really necessary to have a vote, or just a further discussion to see where we were?
If you've done nothing to hold on.
Yeah.
I can give a vote to amend their license to take that off there. I don't, it's on the license.
I would like that motion. That's a good one. Unfortunately, Lisa can't make it.
So moved, I made the motion to amend the license to remove the six-month review of the entertainment license.
Second.
Made by Les, seconded by Hal. Made by Les, seconded by Hal. Further fostering a business climate in Douglas that's suitable for our entrepreneurs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Believe that to be unanimous. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll sign those licenses and pick it up.
I'll hold up your demands.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. D.C. land acquisition. The folks at DCR had asked us to review and inform you that they want to buy more land within the state forest, and I have to read the following. Chairman Bonin, please read the following.
And Chairman, the top two.
The top, the entire thing?
Yes.
All right. According to my boss, I want the townspeople to know that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting through its Department of Conservation and Recreation has under consideration the acquisition of a parcel of land in the town of Douglas containing approximately 35 acres. The property is currently forested and contains wetlands and is adjacent to the Douglas State Forests. The proposed use for the property will be conservation and recreation. Attached is the locust map marked Exhibit A, which shows the property in which DCR is interested. And here's the part. The Douglas Board of Selectmen at the Tuesday, October 1 meeting is announcing and acknowledging that the Commonwealth is considering this acquisition for the above-stated purpose. Looks like any piece of land in the state forest, but I'd be curious to see what the board thinks.
Well, we would be having less revenue from the parcel if it were to stay...
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can pull it up on the screen for you, while...
We have it in our packets, but for the folks at home, if that comes through, that's probably helpful.
Sure.
Just need a screen sharing ability from the host. So, to get your bearings, this is northwest Maine here. So, Walla Street where the causeway is. This land is severely landlocked. There's no way to get to it at all, and is surrounded almost on all sides by land owned by DCR. There is, and Route 16, Webster Street is here. This is a very isolated parcel with no value for future development whatsoever, in my opinion. I think it's best to be preserved, the state forest.
If I'm not mistaken, Matt, I think there's already trails that pass through this particular parcel?
There are. Yep, some of these green lines here are trails. That's right. Yep, and they were going onto private property, so DCR's acquisition of this makes more sense for that regard.
Just through the chair, one of my concerns, just with the DCR obtaining more land in Douglas or our ability to negotiate with the DCR. It's 34 acres. Doesn't sound like much, but this is kind of like a key crossroad piece for them. I know I spoke probably, I don't know, about two years ago with Mr. Woolzik about, you know, seeing if there's any potential for land swaps that would benefit the town with the DCR. That would open up some things that would be beneficial for the town's tax base, you know. This parcel is only assessed for...
$219,000.
Is it?
$219,000.
Small amount.
Couple hundred thousand. Top left, top right, I mean.
Yeah, $219,000.
Is this piece landlocked?
It's landlocked, so... Yeah. It's in the middle of their land.
Are there any state properties that we currently have our eyes on? Are we points taken, Les?
We were blocked on the north side of 16 that time from the last property acquisition that, you know, I don't think if they're going to give a trade us some other access to 116, probably. That's the only thing they have that would be of value to us. On the other hand, we're looking for another, for more state funds. Maybe this is a bone we throw, say, look, we're long-suffering with the forest, and now here we're willing to do something else for the Commonwealth, with the Commonwealth help of Douglas.
I don't mind that approach. When I first got on this, I was dead-set against the state buying up more land, and then I kind of realized that in our little nook and the cranny, you know, this is a resource that is not going to produce very much, by the way, revenue. Points noted, Les, but Hal, I think you raised a point about being good partners with the Commonwealth. So, I personally, I thought that a long ago. I'm prepared to acknowledge that they are pursuing it and letting the market fall where it falls.
I don't think there's any action required. Just that we read the notice, and you've done that.
All right. Any other topics or anything on number eight before we move to nine, the Warren articles? Call us the Matt Benoit Show. Matt?
Yeah, Bob Solman has his hand raised. He had something more to add.
Yeah, I didn't know if you want to maybe potentially make a comment that DCR potentially support an increase on our Water Management Act permit. I'm not sure. I think Tim was probably there, and Hal may have been there. When we went through the permitting process before, when they reduced our Water Withdrawal Act permit, and we enacted town council to fight back with them a little bit, and then we agreed to their terms, which were not really in our favor. But with all the growth that we have going on in the industrial, commercial area, we're getting close to our Water Management Act permit limit with the limits that they set. So, I think, you know, DCR is the one that kind of pushed the state to get us those limits. So, I think it might be something worth mentioning to them to say, you know, we would appreciate them to support increasing our Water Management Act permit should we go that route.
We could send that letter to them along with the fact that we will support...
We read...
Yeah. But that's all. I think it's worthwhile to have an open line to give and take with them, because it's challenging at times, the DCR.
Doesn't hurt to ask, anyway.
And I'm sure we've objected to that restriction, so this is probably a good piece of paper trail to just get on record that that is a concern. We're not bumping up against that right now, but you expect we might be? Bob?
With the potential for Pine, the Pine project, depending on what goes in there, that could be a factor for us. So, we are approaching the limits that they set for us. We have plenty of water available. It's just what they set for us for limits and the permit.
In our, in the office's response, can we include Bob's issue? Great.
Mr. Chairman, two quick things. One is, there was an agreement reached some time ago that the DCR commissioner would come to Douglas once a year, and it has actually been some time. I believe the last gentleman that was here left the Baker administration and wasn't replaced very quickly, and then the Baker administration ended.
I think I only seen it once.
It's been a good three years, I think, since...
Maybe it was the first year I was going, maybe.
So, we're probably due for a visit to talk about the beach, talk about pilot, talk about the water withdrawal permit, and I think it's a good way for us to leverage our delegation. Secondly, as far as the land swaps go, you have to own the land, so we're exempt from Chapter 30B if we do a transaction with another government entity. That does not need to go through the real estate liquidation process required by 30B Section 16. But you have to own it first, so, you know, that's a program. So, do you want to go out and reach people who may not have put their land in 61 or may have their land in 61 and begin to acquire parcels for the town that you think the state might want to have someday? Because you need that leverage to get something they already have that we might want. So, there's a lot that goes into this, and unfortunately, it just wasn't as simple as dealing with an individual landowner and just swapping something that they might want for what we might want, because that would have to go through Chapters 30B, Section 16. Which requires an appraisal and all of this.
Yep. But to your point, you mean, it'd be worthwhile having a conversation with the DCR commissioner? I think that's the key here. I think that to open up the...
And not for nothing, it's the master plan committees failing with, in my personal
opinion, to identify what they want to do for amassing open space in town, whether it's going to be held by the Commonwealth or held by the town of Douglas. Where would it be located and what it's going to offset in terms of areas being developed? That is actually a planning function. The 10-year plan should address that question.
So, let's get them signed up and get them in here.
They've been reading, so I'm sure Matt can update us.
As they are probably watching, I will say, from where we were with DCR to where we are now in relation to the beach, it is problem solved. I mean, some of our early, early meetings were quite hostile with our friends from Boston.
Challenging.
They have certainly heard us and rectified many of those concerns. I don't think I heard one complaint this year from...
Now, I mean, since the policy has been to close the park once it's full a day, that's made all the difference. That and making it a little bit more expensive to go in a park and sharing it with the town and the house.
Now, Matt, if you think we've hit all our marks, I'll start with you in regards to some Warren articles that you'd like to see on the Warren.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Which one would you like me to tackle first? The only reason I'm on remote is so I can provide visual aid. Otherwise, I'd be in the room.
Okay. Well, in our packet, there are six bullets, and my understanding is, as I read those, that the bullets are yours. But we'll start with highway bounds monuments discussion that we had at our last meeting.
We spoke about that at our last meeting, and we asked that I generalize the language in the motion, which I've done, and it's gone in front of the planning board, which they've supported, provided their letter of support to you this evening. So, that is the proposed motion for those bounds. We discussed this at our last meeting to generalize it, to make it so it's not stuck on one subdivision or one roadway, so that we can do multiple projects at once, given the amount of funds and the bits of the project. What these are, these are missing bounds from old subdivisions for the folks at home that just weren't ever installed, so it's impossible for folks to get surveys without permanent bounds on some of these old subdivisions in which they were not installed because of improper bonding or what have you. So, this will hopefully correct some of the issues that we have on some of these subdivisions in town.
Planning board kind of beat up the 20,000 number, thought that was sufficient?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, in the past, we've had 12,500. I had a brief conversation with Mr. Benoit about the bounds. For an example, Brookside has 16 homes on there, and they have it spelt out to have 35 bounds. It sounds a little excessive. You need control points, especially with today's technology for surveying. They're using a lot of GPS. So, maybe a suggestion to the planning board was to use a little discretion and try, they'll be able to get more subdivisions done for a lesser amount than what they have in the past.
Right.
So, then, the conversation also with, sorry, the conversation also with Mr. Benoit was to generalize the amount of money, so then they'd have the discretion to figure out which subdivisions they want to do before we typically dictated it to one or specified one particular subdivision. But I think we've been paying a lot of money to put acceptable amount of bounds in these subdivisions, and it's not necessary.
Noted. I think it might be helpful to read what was proposed to the town, because I think it addresses that and gives Matt and the company a little flexibility. But the question is to see if the town would vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purposes of surveying and installing highway bounds and subdivisions throughout the town of Douglas or act on anything relative thereto. Not a lawyer, but that...
The only thing I would add to that, just so the people don't get confused, because this could be understood as you're going to take care of all the subdivisions, and that's not even close. Yeah, how many subdivisions do you have? Half dozen of them or so?
There are...
You're talking a lot of money. If you're 10 or 12, five apiece, you're probably 50,000 or more, 50, 75,000. So, you just don't want the people to think that we're going to get all the subdivisions, and then it comes up again next year. This is just to get, to give them some money to get started, to start accomplishing the goal of getting the bounds in.
Just while we're waiting on Mr. Benoit, but just to continue through the chair, you know, this was started and then it paused, so the board, planning board, has done this in the past. I think they took three passes at it with the 12,500, and so they continue to kind of go through. And, you know, I think I highlighted at the last meeting that they need to look at, what Mr. Fitzpatrick highlighted tonight as well, is the number of bounds and subdivisions. It doesn't need to be what is in there that's required, because it's...
More so control points.
Yeah.
That you can set. Somebody wants a fence there within a couple hundred feet of a control point.
The surveyors are going to get used to walking again, so they'll have to walk down a couple lots before they get to the next control point, so...
Mr. Chairman, there are 13 subdivisions and 259 bounds at least shown, but that number could be less.
Yeah. Do we have to vote on each individual one or vision?
I don't think we need to yet.
Do we, or don't we? Lisa, we need to vote on each one?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Would, yeah.
Well, we're not closing the Warren tonight.
We're not?
No. So, I would think we'd like to see this in some sort of draft form before we start endorsing language.
Okay.
Moving on, Matt, scenic bylaw, scenic road bylaw, the trees.
Yes, sir. So, we've had town council review this. Town council has come back saying that this could be a good adoption under the Home Rule Amendment, but they asked that I amend, because in the original draft, I put Article 4 of the general bylaws, but this is Article 5. That's a clerical error on my part. But otherwise, Israel pleased the language, so this could be a good opportunity for Douglas to exercise our Home Rule Amendment.
And the only change to this is to give discretion to the tree warden and take down any dangerous trees?
Yes, sir.
Pretty straightforward. The zoning bylaw amendment, accessory dwelling units, or ADUs.
Yeah, so, so this one kind of came up out of nowhere in August when Governor Healy, yeah, Governor Healy passed the, what was it, Affordable Homes Act or I forget what it's called. But this one allowed accessory dwellings in the Commonwealth by right, and it could allow as many as possible on one property unless the town were to implement some sort of regulations to govern that. And what they allow towns to do is allow them by right in residential districts, but you can make two or more be allowed by special permit. And also, it's very clear on the size of these ADUs that they have accessory dwelling units, that they can only be 900 square feet or no larger than the gross floor area, more than one-half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is less. So, the largest the one of these could be is 900 square feet, and there's no waivers or no exceptions to that. So, that's what this regulation shows. There's no longer a restriction that these have to be with relations to the homeowner. That's a big one. Those special permits said they had to be related in some capacity, but that's no longer, that's no longer applies. These can be rented out or however they want to do it, right? These don't have to be for in-laws as it used to be. So, what this does, they're allowed by right in the residential districts, RA, RC-1, RC-2, and VR. They still have to apply by setbacks and any non-conformant standards by CBA or whatnot. And, ooh, what am I missing? Oh, and these have to go through site plan review from the planning board. So, we still have some governance of the safety of these ADUs and make sure there's adequate parking and those standards. So, they have to apply by all the sections of 954, the site plan review, in addition to what's outlined here. The spy law was supported by the planning board at their last meeting. They've scheduled a public hearing for October 23rd. It's consistent with the Mass General law, 48, Section 5, in order to get this on for the town meeting. Have to answer any questions?
Does this apply retroactively to units already in existence that are housing relatives of the homeowner?
That's a great question. So, any previous units that have special permits that would expire would then be allowed by right. So, they're grandfathered from this, and once their special permits expire, they're then allowed by right.
Just through the chair, and I think, Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it wouldn't impact the folks who have in-laws today by adopting this. And I just want to say through the chair, just that, I think the planning board and Mr. Benoit have done a great job at spearheading this in a very short timeframe since the governor kind of put this forward.
This used to be a hot-button item. State laws taking that away?
Question, Mr. Benoit. Does this only apply to single-family residents?
Demand for housing.
Yeah. As of right now, it does. But one of the items that was brought up was if we wanted this to add to two families or multifamilies, that language could be altered. That probably will come up at the planning board meeting. That might be an amendment that's made. But this does only apply to single families, right?
And is an existing home with an accessory unit or in-law apartment, however we term that, considered a single family or a two-family?
That's kind of up in the air at this point. Like, that's, that's part of the whole, this whole scramble here. What are we going to do? What do we call these things? Are they going to condex them? Are they going to make them accessory dwelling units? It's, it's hard to say at this time.
So, and the reason why I'm asking that is, let's, let's say I have an in-law apartment on my house now, and I have plenty of area in my yard, and I have to meet, all I have to do is meet the setbacks. Am I allowed to put in another unit detached from my dwelling or I, or I'm not allowed because I already have one? So that's just language that you might want to touch on and make sure it's clear.
Yep. No, that's, that's pretty clear. If you already have one, if you need another one, you need a special permit.
That's not what I just said to you. So let's assume that this February 2nd, 2025, when this becomes, and goes into effect, you, at that point, you already have an in-law apartment on your house, but it's considered a single-family house with an in-law. Are you allowed to put another ADU out in the yard detached from your, your property as long as you meet the setbacks? Or are you prohibited because you have a, you have technically a two-family house? You get what I'm saying?
If we pass this bylaw, you can do that with a special permit from the planning board. But if we do not, then you can do it by right.
So that is the answer.
You can get another one with such a permit?
Section 332, new schedule, subsection two. Only one ADU is allowed as a matter of right on any property. Additionally, ADUs may only be allowed with the issuance of a special permit by the planning board. This law, state law, the Affordable Homes Act, only applies to single-family zoning. So the conversation piece here is, I've got a single-family home in a single-family residential zoning district.
Yeah.
I have an ADU that I have a special permit through the Douglas Planning Board.
Currently?
Current. After February, that special permit really isn't needed anymore. It's as of right. Can I get another? The reason why you want to pass this bylaw is because if you want another, you have to go through special.
Right. Yeah, I'm just making sure there's not a loophole. That's all I'm asking. So it's, and I heard everything you said. A single-family house with an in-law apartment, is that classified as a two-family or a single-family house?
It doesn't matter, because it's the zoning classification of the lot as a single-family residential district.
Okay. I'm not going to do it. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah. And then, you would have to check with the building commissioner, but I would be more under the thought process that since it's in a single-family zoning area, it's a single family, because they added the in-law, right? It's still, because the, the big thing was, was, you know, having served on the planning board for a number of years, is that it was still a single-family home with the in-law, because they are utilizing the same well, the same septic, the same utilities. And so it was...
My point exactly. So as of February 2nd, on December 31st, I put my accessory unit on there, February 2nd. Now, the state law kicks in, and you just told me that mom's still considered a single family. Do I have to get that, what the town administrator said? Is there, it becomes a loophole, which you can, is it by right, or is it by a special permit?
You're categorizing each building into each category under the regulatory scheme. You have a single-family home, and you have an ADU. So you only have one ADU, even as of right. If you want more than one, only if the town should vote this bylaw, you would need a special permit, need a second or more.
Okay.
So if you had a big enough lot with enough setback, you could have multiple ADUs and have...
If you can get the special permit, yeah. So we got to have many tiny houses.
Yeah.
As long as they're not over 900 square feet.
Yeah.
Just, just a question through the chair to, to Mr. Benoit.
Interesting.
You raised a great question, Mr. Fitzpatrick. I just want to, and I think this is where it would go, is, is there any language in here regarding the title of the property being subdivitable, or would that need to be in here in any way?
Well, he did touch on conduising the property. So...
That's, that's exactly the right.
No, you could do that. Right. So any duplex, anything like that, you can condex it, and you share in the land, and you can have separate owners. So that's what's going to happen with this. This is an easy way to do it. So now, in a bylaw that is proposed, meet the setbacks. Think about what that is, right? So if you have a long rectangular lot along the street, as long as you get 25 feet from this side and 25 from that side, 50 from the front and 25 from the back, unless you're in village residential, which is different, you could basically put two single-family houses on, on your property. And 900 square feet is a decent-sized house for retirement or a startup. So anyways.
That's going to come down, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to the policy consensus of the planning board and what their attitude is towards the issuance of special permits. Because the standard for the issuance of special permits is going to be what? Help me out here, Matt. I kind of think I know the answer, but rather than venture it, what is the...
You're a lot less off. You thought he was on the hot seat.
What is the standard for the issuance of a special permit?
It's got to be in social, economic, community need, adequacy of utilities, neighborhood character and social structure, impacts of the natural environment, traffic flow and safety. Those, all those criteria need to be met.
To the satisfaction of the local planning board.
Essentially, you've got sort of mini subdivisions here. You're subject to the subdivision...
This is a backhanded way to undo single-family residential zoning, if your planning board is so inclined. Look, you can drive a truck through these standards for the issuance of the special permit, right? Anybody can make an argument. It depends on what the people sitting on the dais will believe and go along with. So you could be limiting it, as I said, to one ADU as of right, and you'd have a real hard time getting that second one. But in certain communities in Massachusetts, if they were so inclined, if you had a 10-acre lot that was more or less configured in a way where your house and your existing ADU was on one edge of it, they were so inclined to give you a special permit or to let you build that out, you could do that. And so you're, there's no single-family residential zone anymore. Now you've built a whole bunch of tiny houses on a big lot.
Yeah. So for clarification, kind of going back to what Mike was saying as far as your single-family house with an in-law, after the February deadline, does that in-law now become the ADU?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what Matt was making sure I understood, which I was. I was just, what I was doing is explaining the potential of, of an argument for a loophole, depending on how the, the person receiving the argument would be. Fortunately, he doesn't sit on any of these boards, so we don't have to deal with him.
What about the other subdivision requirements? Are they applicable if you do this?
No.
Huh? No?
Single lot.
Yep. Not necessarily a bad idea, actually. If, if it's done properly, it's not a bad idea to have these, these units. I don't, I don't understand why we, we grant the accessory apartment to somebody, and then every three years, we make them come back in and give us more money to tell them that they can have it for another three years. I, I think once you have, what are you going to do? Make them take it off? It's unrealistic. But anyways.
That's all we have on that, Mr. Chairman. We're happily go over to Gleason Court if you would like.
No, I would just say, all the more reason to serve on your local boards, local control there is key.
Mr. Chairman, I, I venture to say that this, this bylaw is put in place for that special permit. It's for that more than one ADU is governed by a special permit. That's the big thing that we need to get this in for, or else it's going to, it's going to be a free-for-all in town. Now, I, I fully expect that the kinks are going to end up working themselves out, and we'll probably be back in the spring for amendments to this bylaw. But we at least need this framework in place to prevent the free-for-all happening in February.
For three months.
Noted. Thank you. Anything else on that? We'll go to Gleason Court. We're talking transfer of land at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, screen.
Currently, it's been a lot, four hundred square. Gleason Court building.
This is the old grammar school. I'm going to put this over it. Right now, the town has hired a surveyor to go survey a section of land to be conveyed from the control of the school department to the town, to the board of selectmen, really. So the point is, is to make this old grammar school a more conforming lot by making it, its size, this rear setback, you make that go away. So the rear setback issue is with keeping this from being a conforming lot at this time. So what we're looking to do not only is to get that piece transferred, but also to eliminate the, eliminate all the previous town meeting actions to allow the select board to dispose of the resulting parcel as been voted previously, you know, at, at other meetings. I think our Blacks, our Building Facilities and Construction Committee has recommended this building for sale on multiple occasions, including recently. So this article would also, in addition to making this, this land transferred, to make this a more conforming lot, make this more attractive to future buyers. Mr. Benoit wants to add anything to this?
That's really the goal here. Right. So the property as currently configured is not really in saleable condition. It's not the condition of the building as much as it is the lot itself is clumsy. Gleason Court is a public way all the way to the top of the driveway and what used to be sort of like cul-de-sac. It's kind of visible on the map. So you have a lot on a public way. So what you need to do is set up your setbacks to make it a conforming lot. And we do have significant interest in this parcel from outside parties, but they needed enough room to have a little bit of parking or some other activity in the backyard behind the building in order to make it a more attractive thing for them to buy. So this is a complicated process. Correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the school committee voted in June?
May 1st.
May 1st, to, in support of transferring this quarter of an acre back to the select board and town control, because it is not necessary for educational purposes.
Correct.
So the, this is, this is like, how many times can I hit, how many times do I have to hit the head of a nail to drive it? But then, the select board at some point before special town meeting should vote that it has no municipal purpose and request the power to dispose of it in a real estate transaction. If town meeting agrees and transfers the land from the school to the select board, and also in the same, I think in the same warrant article, could authorize you to dispose of the property, and the reason why the language is there to supersede all prior restrictions or other discussion from prior town meetings is people's opinion of what this property should be used for has changed over time. We kind of went from a vision which was somewhat more narrow and wanted the building reused for less intense purposes and not for residential. It's most likely Suter is going to want to develop it as a residential property. And I don't think that was a town meeting vote. Some people think it was. Rather than fight about it and try to dig through minutes and whatever record there was, let's just say all prior votes are superseded by this vote. This vote, town meeting transfers this property to the select board to dispose of in a real estate transaction.
I think we did that once before.
I think you did. My personal recollection, because I wasn't here and I had to do the research, was that when the select board gave a special town committee the task of selling this property, there was a charge, a written charge that was written by the select board, handed to those members, and it was after the result of public discussion, in which at least one or two members of the school committee had reservations about potential use of the building, and those reservations were included in the charge. It was on my watch when this select board dissolved that committee, therefore that charge really is null and void. I just want to get past everybody's clear or fuzzy memories of how this was done and just clear it up and say, look, we're going to use the Chapter 30B, Section 16 process, put it out to auction, as is required, and try to get the highest value for the town.
Do you think the schools transferred it over to the town in the past, but if we want to?
No, you've already, they've already transferred the lot and the school building on it. But what they're doing is they're cutting off a piece of their existing remaining holdings.
Ah, okay.
So we can add it. So there's an intervening process. I'm sorry. The planning board will do it basically in approval-not-required A and R subdivision to put that together into one piece.
What they had done how back when they cut that off, they cut off the entire back parking lot. It came about five feet from the corner of the building, so it made the whole back re-useless. So that's what we're trying to square off, to gain that space back for parking.
Wasn't always easy. I think we actually went to town meeting looking to get control of that building, and we're kindly told by the powerful townspeople, not at this time. But it's nice to see the school committees on board with what we're doing. Obviously, they will be stakeholders in anything that goes in there. We'll work in partnership with them.
I'd sell it for a very nominal sum, but for the right use, it was going to produce tax dollars and a nice improvement in the downtown area.
I consider that a challenge. I'm going to get a good, strong, competitive real estate price for this building, because it deserves it. Good, really great bones in this building.
We get the good price and the revenue.
Yeah.
Before the roof goes. All right. Interesting town meeting. Going on to Green Communities Grant, the LED lighting at the Douglas Middle School.
So coming on, I think, October 18th, I will be submitting a grant application for the middle school LED lighting. The cost of the project, less the incentive, is $123,527. But the Green Community Grant will only cover $100,000. So what we typically do is we cover the rest plus a $5,000 fee to CMRPC to help us administer the grant. So that brings us to $28,527. So I'm asking for 300, just in case we end up anywhere over.
Nerdy.
I'll answer any questions about this.
What would you do with the extra $270,000? Now, Matt, I'm picking on you. It was $30,000 you're seeking.
That's just payback from calling them out earlier.
Yeah.
Touche. No, appreciate it. But obviously, the school's in support of using Green Communities money for this.
So LED lighting projects, Mr. Chairman, are ridiculously good deals.
100%.
We save a ton of money. The payback's like a one year and three months.
Pay our share back.
We just get it back.
Just by saving on electricity.
Matt, is this one of the three projects that you brought to Capitol?
Yes.
Why aren't the other two?
The other two were the town hall and the post office.
And how come we don't have those?
This one's just for the Green Community Grant. I thought the other two were for Capitol. I don't think they were warranted or closed.
Okay. No, I'm just asking. I don't know. I'd have to talk to Tim's boss over there to find out which ones they were. I remembered what you said. Thanks, man.
Runs the ship.
Sure. So just to, just to go over, the total upgrade cost is $170,000. Utility center from National Grid is $46,000, and that brings the cost down to 123.5. So the annual, annual energy savings is about $28,000 annually. The total payback period is three and a half years. three and a half years. This is a pretty, pretty good project. I think this should, this should get approved for Green Community funding, no problem.
Good. Last one on the night, Old Douglas Road, looks like we don't want it, no longer want it.
Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen on this one. This one's a little complicated.
And just through the chair, Matt, it says in the map that you provided, it says Old Webster Road?
Yeah. I apologize about that. It's Old Douglas Road. It's Old Webster Road in Webster, Old Douglas Road in Douglas.
Okay.
That's my fault.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So, what we have...
Not to be picky, but it's Old Webster Road in Douglas and Old Douglas Road in Webster.
Try to remember that.
The name of the street is where you're going to if you're on that street.
Right. Would you just validate that architectural standard I have?
All right. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, sorry. So, some reason on our tax, Matt, it's labeled as Old Douglas Road. So, what was brought forward by fine sand and stone was a plan that's on the, let me go back to the map real quick. It's these two parcels here on the westernmost side of Douglas, right? Webster Street's here, and these two parcels right here. So, what was brought forward was an application for a plan, an 81P plan that was submitted that combined these two lots, but it still has that easement right in the middle of it. So, what they're hoping to do, and this is an old, this was an old county road, right? And the county doesn't exist anymore, so the town takes over jurisdiction, and the town selectmen have already voted to abandon maintenance and access to the roadway, but according to their attorney, we still need a town meeting vote to do it, so that's why we're here.
Just question to the chair.
It's only eliminated between these two parcels, but it would still remain, and these two are both owned by the state. I don't think the state's gonna be petitioning us anytime soon to get this removed, but this would eliminate it from these two industrially zoned parcels.
Middle.
Happy to answer any questions?
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm just a little confused. If you're going to abandon the road, is what you're asking for, the rights, wouldn't you have to do it from the endpoint and show the whole road that you're...
Well, what they're petitioning for is just that section, because the owner of the road is, been decommissioned, there is no more Webster County roads, right? So, it's just, you could go all the way, you could all go all the way back and down through, I guess.
Oh, I'm thinking of like a right-of-way, if you just nip in the middle and say, oh, we're gonna, you know, extinguish the right-of-way in the middle of a lane going from end to the other.
So, I guess the question is, Mr. Benoit, does there anybody have deeded rights to this piece of property?
No, other than the town. Town has interest in it just for Route 16, but that's it.
Okay, that's...
DCR has their access rights to both sides, so they're the dominant tenement building, the town's serving.
Okay.
So...
So, it doesn't impact anybody's access rights, that's the key? Okay.
No.
How the problem done, right?
This is kind of one of those housekeeping items that I know Mr. Wojcicki would like to stop discussing at some point and get this off of our books, because this is just one of those things that just keeps rearing its ugly head until we finally get it resolved.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Matt.
Sure thing.
I think that's a good update. Along the same lines, timeline for last consideration of any articles, be next meeting? And we're closing next meeting?
Yeah.
So, time is of the essence. I, for one, don't like last-minute articles. I know they sometimes exist, and there is enough wiggle room, but hopefully, there's nothing too controversial that's not on our radar. Meeting minutes, we're gonna gloss over those, we got those a little late. Matt, you have a report?
I wanna go home and pop some popcorn and watch the...
Yep.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Good night, thank you, Matt.
Matt, I'll keep an eye on Tim, make sure he does the votes while you're gone.
That's good.
Very quickly, as fast as I can, the ICMA conference was last week. I did attend, grabbed a couple of certifications while I was there, and some topics of current relevance, and was happy to see our little video churning away on different screens, and this is a pretty sizable venue. You know, a lot of the folks, there were about 5,500 managers and administrators at this meeting, only about 1,000 members of the ICMA are towns the size of Douglas, most of the others are big, they're city managers. I'm not looking to impress the city manager from the city of Indianapolis with our mile and a half of pipe. That wasn't the point. The point was the magnitude of what we accomplished, or the resources we had available to do it. And so, I, you know, I think it was all very well received. I heard a lot of talk at the ICMA conference about future trends, that's one of the primary purposes of going to this thing once every four or five years or so, is just to listen to qualified academics talk about economic and other trends. And a couple of things jumped out to me that I'll say more about in future, but two things. One is artificial intelligence, the other is the resulting demand on the energy supply of our country and how that might impact our day-to-day lives. If AI becomes the, a major part of our economy, and the problem with that is there's no way to avoid it, frankly, but doesn't mean we have to incorporate it into our operations, it's just that. Some of us had a casual conversation about it at the conference, it's basically, since bad guys have nothing to do all day but be bad, if they can gather the resources to harness an AI that they control, it will make the rest of us miserable if we don't have AI to safeguard us and to counteract their movement. These things are tremendous users of energy, and I was kind of taken aback when one woman in particular, who's a very accomplished forecaster, she issued a, she took the top 10 issues, and number three was Brown's, that we would all eventually have to live with the possibility that, depending on the strength of the grid in our jurisdictions, that the rest of the economy would draw so much power that we would actually be running out less than full capacity. And that's a real issue for planning municipal government going into the future, making sure that our systems are safeguarded, we have public safety functions that run 24/7, you can't just turn them off for a couple hours, roll the dice for the bets. You've gotta have a steady supply of energy. And if you're forward-thinking, you're thinking about how to secure energy for your residents, not just for local government operations. So, some of what came out of the conference. The biggest issue that we face presently is the news that we received this morning, I think some people anticipated it for a long time, is that most of our ports are closed and the longshoremen are on strike. This is an aspect of American life that most people don't appreciate. They don't appreciate the impact of trains and ships and trade in general on our lives. And it becomes a political football, very popular to bang away at people in other countries, to which a well-informed person has to take a step back and say, look, show me something that you have in your house that is 100% made in the United States. And I don't think that pile is gonna be very big. We import a tremendous amount of material into this country, some of it raw material, some of it finished goods, all of which adds value to our economy and actually keeps prices down. So, notwithstanding anybody's decision to engage in trade wars or whatnot against enemies real and perceived, the issue is, if we cannot move products through our ports, we could see prices and shortages in the short to medium term that are very, very significant in an impact on everybody's day-to-day life. We do not grow coffee, not very much of it, in the United States. Simple things like that, the things that you take for granted, may be a lot more expensive. The President of the United States, under the Taft-Hartley Act, has the ability to intervene and basically force the parties to a conclusion, or at least force them to work until they've reached a conclusion within a certain timeframe, which is what happened during the potential rail strike. And while the current administration has said they will not invoke that authority, I think wiser minds are saying, yeah, right, after about three to five days, things will be so ground to a halt that you'll need to invoke the authority. It takes about five or six days to recover what you lose by having a port closed for one day. Because of the backlog in the ships and all of, all of the logistics of a major port are based on timing, and getting things off the ship, not only off the ship, but off the ship, onto trucks, onto trains, and moved out of the way so more stuff can come in. This is a real problem when you throw a wrench into the scheduling. So, everybody out there, I don't think should go into hoarding mode, but a longshoreman strike could have as much effect on this country, if not more than COVID, they would possibly attract here. So, we'll be keeping a careful eye on this, because a lot of the things we buy have foreign components as a town, so that this slows our supply chain anymore. One of the things that's really difficult to deal with right now in our contractual relationships is that the cost of everything has gone up so quickly and so far. So, we were using estimates at town meeting for what it would cost to do Project X, and as we go through the process of procurement, the delay, the engineering work that had to be done to design something before we put it out to bid, you're looking at prices being 25, 30 cent higher than what we estimate, and that's rippling through a number of our projects right now. So, to that end, a quick update on each of these. The fire department building is probably the worst news that I have, and I'm trying to figure out a Plan B. The electrical upgrade and HVAC upgrade to the building was budgeted a long time ago. Frankly, the work that's been done by the professional services firms, both the engineering firm and the architectural firm involved with this, has been completely unacceptable. And now they're pointing fingers at each other, you delayed us, you delayed us, not have detail in your drawing, blah, blah, blah. Oh, and by the way, so this is just Friday, a gentleman says to me, oh, I think this project's over $1 million. Well, I only have $275,000 budgeted for it. It's a cinder block building with dropped ceilings, I do not know what it is you're doing, unless you're gonna mine the copper from the soil of the station, that's a ridiculous cost. I don't wanna disappoint our fire department either, though, because these are badly needed building grids. So, I'm trying to find an alternative path. Do not rule out the possibility of my coming to you to reprogram those ARPA funds to another ARPA project where we might be short or where we could use the help, and look at the fire station as something that we need to go to town meeting for in the spring, and just do the project that way. That's, that's kind of where my default position is. We have the roof project here, the municipal center, it's rapidly coming to a close. There are some important details that need to be dealt with up there with stormwater management, getting water off the roof, some of the decorative elements. Some have noticed that we need to take a good look at the gym roof, since everybody's been up there looking down, they've seen some stuff that we need to pay attention to. We are under warranty, but you might still see people walking around up there on the roof doing repairs even after the main project is done here. We have an issue with our phones. I don't wanna get into all the details of, we basically moved from a traditional phone system to a voice-over-internet protocol system, which is basically computers, phones are in the closet. And we unified the Douglas Public Schools with Douglas Town into one account, so we can call each other on the intercom and share data in other ways. And it was not a bad project, it was very affordable, the equipment did come in, the installation ran well, but we've had some pretty significant issues with the level of service quality. And we do not have a service-level agreement with this vendor, so they haven't guaranteed us a particular level of performance. I would still say they're a breach, because for the better part of a week, a lot of our phones didn't function at all, so you don't need a service-level agreement for that, you're saying they don't even work. But I initially thought it would be easy to change vendors, in the details of the bowels of the contract, it has actually a poison bill, and it's gonna make it very difficult. We'd have to buy out the contract for the last two years, so I think what we're gonna have to do is sharpen our pencils and work with the existing vendor to get them to improve their service, and then make the move when it makes sense financially. Camera project at the schools is, the kickoff meeting is scheduled for next week. We've finally got a project manager assigned from the vendor, and for that project, we'll be going forward. Lastly, on the highway barn, just for the board's notice, I've gotten a free consult, so your first conversation with an attorney is always free, right? But I'm reaching out to a law firm that specializes in municipal construction, so basically public buildings and public works, to ask some pointed questions about whether or not our approach to the highway barn that we think we should be able to do is actually legally possible. I've gone as far into this pool of sand as I want to go. I'm not a practicing attorney, I went to law school, I've got the certificate to be a public purchasing official in Massachusetts, that's not enough. I need someone who can give us really solid guidance on what is necessary. Smart people know what they don't know. I don't know how smart I am, but I know I don't know this. And I don't wanna make a mistake, because I think we have millions of dollars at stake here, and I wanna make sure that if we follow the path we wanna follow, that the procurement documents are written by an attorney who specializes in this area, keep us out of trouble with attorney general. So, that's the research we're gonna be doing there. A piece of good news, we received a notice from Mass DOT today that we are going to get a grant award for a significant roadway project that is, I believe it's part of a whole flurry of bills that went through the legislature, making money available to rural communities for roadways. Douglas's sheriff, this is, I think this is an extremely impressive offer to us, is to pave South Street from mile marker zero to mile marker 3.25, which sounds to me to be the entire road. Now, as you know, we already paved a portion of South Street.
Oh, South Street's one, three and a half miles, though.
Yeah, we paved a portion.
Zero is the state line, I'm sure.
Right.
Well, I mean, I was doing the scale thing. You know, I'm not the world's best scale of...
Whatever it is they give us is good.
Yeah.
Listen, so, it might be that if it is longer than 3.25 miles in total, we've already paved and done drainage on a portion of it, so whatever 3.25 is out there that they might be willing to pave, they might be willing to give us the money. But certainly, they will do from the state line to the end of what we're working.
Right.
And at almost a million bucks a mile, that's a really big win.
Yeah.
It wasn't merit, it wasn't that we went out and sought it, it's that they decided to give it to us, but it's more impetus, you know, stick with the road program, be patient, and pursue, you know, the digestible chunks at a time, and it'll all get done.
That would free up some Chapter 90 money, probably to do other things.
Doesn't free anything up. We're gonna continue with our Chapter 90 program.
Okay, so this will be... Okay, it's the same thing.
-on the roads that we have planned. So the STANTEC revisit of the pavement management study is due in, and the draft is completed. So we will have an updated list of priority streets in our Chapter 90, with the town match will be applied to us.
Yeah, because South Street was already addressed on, on Adam's plan.
The worst part of it was.
Right. So that was addressed. He's got Northwest Main Street, wherever else he's working on. So this is just a bonus to get more of South Street done.
Fingers crossed for my friends at Fairbanks. Rarely do I travel that road, but it's somewhat amazing that the lack of, and I'm not looking for complaints, but that road's horrific up at the top there.
That, that whole development.
Yeah, some challenges.
Yeah, that was a long time ago planning or decision, right? My last note for the night, just on a personal level, it was really sad for me to see that Dikembe Mutombo passed away this week. I graduated Georgetown with Dikembe. He was a real character, and he was a guy around campus. So a lot of the basketball players in that program were just not part of our experience at all. Allen Iverson used to drive around on the brick walkways in between buildings with his brand new BMW.
Because he could.
He was just a jerk. He, he crushed. I thought he only lasted two years and moved on. But Dikembe was the real deal. He went to the same schools that we did, took the same classes we did, graduated with a real degree. He graduated from the School of Languages and Linguistics. Came into the school speaking six languages, but he still had to pass a very difficult program. He had to demonstrate fluency and a whole bunch of other coursework. What I remember about the guy is I'd be waiting in line to get to the cafeteria for dinner. You know, the poor guy getting Marriott-level food from the cafeteria at college, and he was always there. He was in the front of the line because he had a really big booming voice. So he ate in the same slop shop as the rest of us did and took advantage of that. And when I would do my laundry late at night, he'd be in the laundry room, usually with his girlfriend, but he washed, he did his own clothes. He was just a really cool guy, down-to-earth. And if you watched his career, after being successful in the NBA and going to the Hall of Fame, he devoted his entire life to charity and giving back to the people of the Democratic Republic of Congo, which is where he was from. So it's really sad that he had brain hands or had passed away at the age of 58. Terrible news. We lost a good, good human. So sad to see. On executive session, Mr. Chairman, I think you can skip Item B. It will not be addressed in executive session. So anybody in the future looking for executive session minutes, won't need to look for it. It's a real, real problem.
Got it. Thank you, Matt. Interesting story about Dikembe. He appeared in my favorite commercial. Uh, 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 not today.
Not today.
Item number 12, open sessions for topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of today. Anything? Speaking is done, we can go into an executive session with a worthy motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to enter executive session for, A, the potential litigation, MSHG and contract closeout cost for Northeast Main Street and Gilbo Street, and to reconvene into open session for the purpose of a German.
Second.
Wonderfully made, Ross. Seconded by Mike. Roll call vote.
Davis Eye.
Smith Eye.
Stevens Eye.
Patrick Eye.
Bona Knight.
Hey, we'll move you up from AAA to major league.
Good night, everyone.